There we go.
Great, thank you, Beth. Good evening, Sarah and Dionne, I'm Lisa Power and everybody else that's here. I am the local chair of, co-chair of Uptown Alliance and founder and co-chair of Tidy Uptown, our local garbage cleanup beautification committee in the area. So anyway, it's nice to meet you. So we're going to start with introductions, you each will have two minutes. Again, try not to refer to the other candidate, just, you know, let us know who you are and what you're about and why you think we should vote for you. So Sarah, we'll start for you.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for caring so much about our city. I'm Sarah Nelson, 35 years Seattle resident, lifelong Democrat, wife, mother, and small business owner, and I am running for reelection to build on the progress that we've made on your top issues and also protect the city against the external threat that is Donald Trump. Because I am the candidate with the years of experience taking on tough issues and battles and winning them. For example, we've got an affordability crisis, so I took on the establishment to allow for 500 units of workforce, union-built housing in the stadium district and also spaces for small businesses. I'm fixing our broken permitting system to make housing cheaper and easier to build. And I'm fighting to get the millions and millions of dollars we've got stockpiled for affordable housing out the door faster because we've still got people living in tents. And I will be fighting also to have sober or recovery-based housing included in the mix. So when I took office, officers were fleeing the city in droves and as a result, crime was skyrocketing, gun violence overdoses were, you know, on the vertical way up. And, and things are different now. I got officer hiring bonuses passed a majority defund council and I reformed the way the city processes SPD applications. And that is resulting in unprecedented hiring right now. More importantly, I have been leading the charge on getting recovery or addiction treatment, which I know something about, at the center of the city's agenda, because addiction is fueling both our public safety and our chronic homelessness problems and also everyone deserves the same chance at recovery that I had. So I'm not going to let Trump destroy our city, but I'm also not settling for the status quo. I'm constantly pushing every city department from SPD to HSD to deliver results and not just promises. And I'm looking at that in the budget right now. So I'm the proven fighter that Seattle needs right now, because when our values and everything that we care about are under attack, we need an experienced fighter and a steady hand at the wheel. So basically, that's the choice in this race. Do we go backward or forward? Soundbite promises or concrete plans? And, you know, with, with Trump threatening all the shenanigans around the corner, we need to make sure that we have an experienced leader who can build on the progress that we've made over the past four years for a safer, more equitable city. And that would be Sarah Nelson, and I've got your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Perfect, Dionne, introduce yourself to us.
Hi, thank you so much for having me and thanks for spending your evening with the Mariners game on here with us tonight. I'm Dionne Foster and I'm really excited to be running for Seattle City Council Position Nine. And I decided to run because of both my professional and my personal experience in the city. You know, starting with the personal side, I am a mom to a now 12-year-old. But when I had him 12 years ago, my family was in a very different place. We were using state supports and services to close the gap because we struggled making ends meet. And I know exactly what it's like to live that experience as somebody in the city who is struggling to find affordable housing. I purchased my home because I got down payment assistance from the state and a partnership between the state and the city. And that's really what allowed both myself and my family to thrive here. I've got the professional experience to do the job as well. I worked as a policy advisor for the city of Seattle for both the Office of Policy and Innovation and the Seattle Public Utilities Office, where I got to work on supporting youth employment programs and also making sure that we deliver affordable utility services to low-income and working-class residents through making improvements in the UDP program, which I was really proud of, especially as somebody who has gone through the experience of accessing city services to work on the inside to make those services better. I've been a nonprofit executive at Washington Progress Alliance, an organization that helps to fight for making Washington a fair, equitable, safe place for everyone. And that job, one of the biggest things that we did was fight for the passage and the defense of the statewide capital gains tax, which is in name a revenue issue, but in practice is something that helps families all around Washington State. That policy change helped move Washington from being the 50th worst tax code in the country to the 49th worst tax code in the country. But the investments from that helped pay for things that are really important, like childcare, early education, and schools. And I decided that I wanted to run for city council because that's the experience and the fight that I want to bring to the moment that we are facing right now. Think there are too many of our neighbors who are living unchallenged outside. If elected, I would be the only person on council who brings a master's in social work and I'm ready to bring that experience to bear to solving some of our most pressing challenges. Further, more than that, we have an affordability crisis. That means we need to be building more housing as part of that solution. And I'm absolutely excited to be an advocate and supporter for making sure we have both housing and investments in affordable housing. And I'm really looking to this conversation tonight. I will say, I can't see the timekeeper, just as a note, so I will try to make an adjustment there. See if I can fix that, but we can keep going, just wanted to let you know, I can't see you.
Oh, no, I think we're good. Yeah, Beth, when Beth comes on camera, that means time.
If I see Beth, I know. Okay, great.
Thank you so much, it's nice to see you and meet you. Dionne, I'm going to start with you regarding the surveillance cameras. So the city council recently voted to expand the city's CCTV network and traffic cameras. You have said that you would voted against this citing concerns over privacy and potential breaches, particularly ICE and federal government and the federal government. But CCTV and other technology-driven tools are becoming standard in most larger cities. Would your position have been different absent current ICE and immigration concerns? Or would you still feel the same way?
Thank you for that question. So I'll just share my perspective for folks that may not have heard it, you know, which is that while we do have significant public safety needs, first, that this was intended to be a pilot that the city council was launching and not something that was going to be expanded prior to receiving the data and the report back from the initial pilot. Second, as you already mentioned, I have significant concerns about overreach from the federal administration. I believe the day after that policy was, those two policy expansions were passed at the local level, we saw the federal government asking for more data from the State Department of Licensing. So I think it's a really important moment that we're in and it's really scary for a lot of people who are worried not just about their privacy, but worried about their ability to stay in the city. So those are the things that did inform my position in this moment. To your question of were we not in this moment, it's, it's hard to imagine even just, you know, 10 months ago when we were in a different, in a different place as a country. But I would still say that my position would be, you know, when you're doing an expansion like this program on surveillance, we really should be waiting to get the data back from the pilot to understand if there are changes that need to be made in the scope and in the implementation and to understand the effectiveness of the program and what the trade-offs are. So for me, I think that's part of really good governance. And so that's the way I would have approached this if we were, you know, in an alternate timeline, as you say, Lisa.
Okay, cool. Great, thank you so much. Sarah, state your case for the increased use of the cameras. Why did you vote for this and how do you balance public safety and concerns over the risk of misuse?
Thank you for that question. So for some background, I, we take an oath to protect the safety, well-being, and, and health of our constituents. And I was motivated by the public safety imperatives to use every tool that we have to keep our residents safe. But here's the thing, what people might not realize is that the CCTV cameras and the license plate readers, all the new technology that we're using right now has been through an exhaustive process that is defined by the surveillance ordinance from years ago. And so that was pretty much, that was an exhaustive process, so those had been vetted for their surveillance capabilities. I voted to expand it because we need, again, to use every tool in our box. And I've, I've traveled to other blue cities across the country and this technology that we are installing and in a real-time crime center is nothing new. Most large urban cities have this. And again, when, when I heard Joey Hollingsworth, Rob Saka, Maritza Rivera, and Deborah Juarez, all people of color say that they support it. And even former president, now council member Juarez, basically kind of took on the opposition to say that my people are dying and we need to, we need this technology to keep people safe. I will say one more thing. A couple nights after we took that vote, but long before they could actually be implemented, someone died right in the area that would have been covered by cameras on Capitol Hill, got shot in the neck. A couple of days previous to that vote, the, the cameras did help officers find someone who had attacked somebody else. And so we, there are, there are restrictions in the way that those cameras can be used. They are not monitored all the time continuously, as has been said by some reporters. They are, when there's an emergency that, that triggers them, that's when the, those cameras can be accessed to allow for an interruption of what's going on and also to provide some evidence that can be used later on in, in a trial. So I think that the balance is, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I know we just touched on, on taxes, but our next question, and Sarah, I'm going to start with you about revenue sources and budget. Would you revisit a capital gains tax proposal? What other revenue streams would you consider or tools for dealing with budget deficits?
Well, we are about to, there is one tax that's on the ballot that will generate about $80 million. And then the mayor has also proposed a, the public safety sales tax that would increase the sales tax by 1/10 of 1%. So together, they will be bringing in close to $120 million. I, I started this campaign saying that I might be open to a municipal cap gains tax. However, that was before what happened in Olympia and I am concerned about some of the overall impacts of that. But here's the thing, we don't just say we need more money. What we have to do is, is identify the, the needs that we are seeking to get more money for and then figure out how we will spend it. And I don't hear that, that conversation happening. What I'm hearing about is we need more progressive revenue, progressive revenue without really a plan on how it will be spent. And what matters most is not the revenue, but the results. And I'll say one more thing, which is that the, it is, even the forecasting office does not know how much the municipal gains tax will generate. The range goes from 18 million to about 30 million. It's very difficult with that level of uncertainty to, to establish what you're going to spend it on, because you're never going to know what, how much money you'll have from one year to the next. I don't like making plans on an uncertain revenue source.
Okay, thank you. Dionne, you support a capital gains tax. Make your case for this along with other potential revenue streams that the council should consider.
Great, absolutely. So, you know, I'll, I'll start with sort of picking it up just where that part of the conversation left off and say, you know, we do actually have a roadmap for ensuring that we can spend revenue from, from a capital gains tax, even if there is some fluctuation. So first, let's name that some of the difference in what's coming in from CBO depends on the rate that you set a municipal capital gains tax on. So that's a policy choice. Secondarily, yes, it depends on sales in a particularly, in a particular year. And so the way that the state has dealt with that is ensuring that the first portion of the money that comes in is spent on education. And then if there's anything that's over that, then they go look into moving it into other sources. So we absolutely have a roadmap for making sure that we can spend that money wisely. So let's be very, very clear about that. Second, I want to say, you know, if we're looking at the local level, there is no shortage of needs. And unfortunately, we are going to see additional needs in the coming months and coming years. We are, while, yes, we are waiting for final numbers on this budget deficit, a lot of the spending, the spending that is in this current budget cycle is one-time spending. And that, some of that one-time spending goes to important programs like expanding the Fresh Bucks program and helping ensure that we have food access. I think to that is one example, because that was, there was a food access programs that were inside the capital gains proposal that Councilmember Moore put forward last year that ultimately failed and that my opponent did not vote for. But folks who are needing SNAP or EBT or food assistance, we're going to see an increased need there because of the, excuse me, the threats and the cuts that are coming to those same programs from the federal government. So from my perspective, it's really important, it's not about just saying, hey, we need progressive revenue. It's saying we have a real needs and real unmet needs in our community. And I'll, I'll just take that one step further, you know, from some of our food banks that are in the area, they're seeing not just increased need, but people who are afraid to go in person because they're afraid of enforcement, they're afraid to access social services. So, you know, I've talked to many of the helpline providers and food banks and they're seeing longer wait lists, particularly for delivery services. So I definitely think there are things that the city can be very clear and create clear through lines on spending that are going to help protect people and keep them safe. I see Beth, so I'm going to stop there.
Perfect. Isn't that nice? They see you and they want to stop.
Good setup.
Thank you, those were both really good answers, thank you. Let's talk about the comp plan. So Dionne, we feel like you kind of dodged the bullet to some extent by not being on the council when they got to, when they had to work on all the amendments, which sounded like zero fun. They were debated, but there's still more to be done as the zoning maps are finalized. What is your position on requests that parks, the tree canopy, and green infrastructure be developed concurrently with the new density?
Request that parks, tree canopy, and green infrastructure are developed concurrently?
Concurrently with new density, the reason.
Yeah, so I think for me, when I'm looking at the comprehensive plan, I think I was a missed opportunity because I don't think I dodged a bullet. I think there's a lot of exciting things. So, but, but, but I hear your point that there was, you know, more than 100 amendments that were considered and still a lot of work to do in the coming years with Phase Two. So, you know, my belief when I think about the comprehensive plan is that we need more housing in more places around the city, particularly in areas where we have access to transit. And in some instances, that may be also aligned with places where we already have existing parks within, you know, we have a vision for having a 10 or a 15-minute city, right? The idea that you have walkable neighborhoods. And in some places, that might be the case. And in other places, it may be the case that you are located on a bus line or on a light rail stop that can get you into a park or green space. So my belief is more housing and more places. And, you know, we also have opportunities with the, with the Parks Levy and we have opportunities with, I believe next year we'll have the Seattle Transportation Measure that's going to end and we'll have an opportunity to renew that. And those are opportunities where you can make investments in additional connective infrastructure for the city. So I think that we should continue to work on expanding housing and then concurrently we can work on our connections and our access to green space. I am a big, you know, I started my career working in environmental justice, I will say, and working in neighborhoods. I live in South Seattle and working in neighborhoods where people want access to more green space. And I think we can use tools, shoot, I just dropped the name of it, there's a King County plan that allows for equity investments where there's gaps in parks. And so there are tools that are at our disposal so that we can advocate for those. But I don't want us to be in a place where we are not planning for the growth that we are already going to have, because we are the fourth, I believe we're the fastest growing mid-sized city in the country. And so I want to make sure that we have enough space to deal with that, so that we are not having sprawl, which undermines our climate goals.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, we have the same question in terms of your position on and requests that parks, the tree canopy, and the green infrastructure be developed concurrently with new, new density.
Well, my answer to that is yes, we cannot, when we're planning for growth, we also have to plan for livability and, and protecting against climate change to the very greatest extent that we can. I do believe that the, you know, people keep complaining about the tree ordinance and that is due for an update. I think that's what you're getting to, or correct me if I'm wrong. But we also have a housing crisis, affordability crisis. So we did have to allow for enough development capacity to get us through the next 20 years. I am a carrot, not a stick person. And so the amendments that I put forward allow for, for, for example, incentivizing the development of stacked flats by increasing where, how tall, and how many units can be built. Create more affordable housing by applying bonuses citywide, including in low-rise zones and removing some of the parking mandates, but not all of them. Improving climate resilience by using development bonuses to incentivize tree preservation. Create more walkable neighborhoods by allowing corner stores in the middle of the block, not just on corners. And, and mostly also encouraging homes near transit by removing parking minimums and also allowing for housing in the stadium district right next to a light rail station, which my opponent opposed. So what really matters, though, is that the details are going to matter next year, because that's when we're going to be deciding how high are those buildings outside the neighborhood centers. And we, I did a lot of talking to community members and also to my district rep colleagues to find out what their neighborhoods were thinking. And so I am, I'm hopeful that the, the voices of the people were represented in the amendments that my colleagues did make, because they couldn't attend all meetings. But we do have to ensure that green space and parks are protected while we grow as a city.
Yes, okay, thank you. Along the same plans here, Dionne, we'll start with you. Will density in Uptown, Queen Anne, and Magnolia translate into affordable middle housing? Many think it will not, like we're just going to end up with more expensive housing. What do you think?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So, you know, I was just coming from a conversation with some housing advocates about this. So my belief in how we get to affordability comes from this question of how do we get to abundance in housing? So I think one of the key problems that's happening, not just in Uptown, Queen Anne, and Magnolia, but all around the city, is that we actually don't have enough housing supply. And when we don't have enough housing supply, that increases pressure on the market and it increases, you have a lot of demand for not a lot of units. And we're seeing that happen in Seattle. And what we've seen in other cities that have actually built enough housing to keep pace with their growth, cities like Austin, is that you start to see the cost of housing come down because you've actually got the market keeping pace. So that's the way that I look at this as a whole, and I think about this position and the job of this position to represent the entirety of the city, is ensuring that when we have, we have zoning changes in Uptown and Queen Anne or zoning changes around, you know, whether it's in West Seattle or Del Ridge or Othello or in other places, that those are intended to make sure that we have enough space to have enough supply. And through investments in supply, we can start to bring some of those costs down. I don't think that those are going to be enough on their own. I mean, I talked about my own personal experience here as a homeowner. You know, I basically was able to access my home because I had down payment assistance and that kind of investment. So I do think there's sort of a combination of making sure that we have a supply and then making sure that we have, you know, the units that OH is investing in, the Office of Housing is investing in building that are affordable at percentage AMI, as well as partnerships between the Office of Housing and the Washington State Housing Finance Commission that invest in affordable down payment programs. So, you know, unfortunately, we're not in a silver bullet position as a city. I think we're sort of in more of a silver buckshot, needing to do multiple strategies to move us forward.
Thank you. Sarah, do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Okay. Will density, will density in Uptown, Queen Anne, and Magnolia translate into affordable middle housing? Many people think it will not, that it's just going to be more expensive housing. What do you think?
I agree with what people think. My answer is no. The, when I was door knocking, so there is something to be said for the more housing than it does, you know, the greater the supply, the, it does ease the pressure on the price escalation of anything we're talking about, any commodity, including housing. But here's the thing, when I was knocking on doors early on in the campaign, people were, people were annoyed and upset that the comp plan was being sold as more affordable housing and they, they were not buying that. And so I didn't hear that argument made by, by executive staff or the people that were talking to neighborhoods, but I, I did come away with this idea that if, if that was how the comp plan update was being described, that's, you know, that's not exactly true. I mean, more housing is good because, like I already said, more supply does help and we do need more supply. However, we all, many of us read that, that story in the paper about how difficult it is these days to downsize, even if you want to, because of the price of housing and financing going up. So I, I have to agree that it's not a guarantee for affordable housing, it's more housing and it allows for people who have the means to move into the, to the more expensive housing and then, then other people can then have access to other options that naturally go, you know, price lower over time. So does that answer your question?
I think so. Good.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to soda and soap, stay out zones. Another where you two differ is this, this idea. So Dionne, start with you. Some argue that the data is not really in yet to evaluate the effectiveness of these zones and many condemn them from, and many condemn them from the outset without even giving the city attorney and the SPD a chance to run the concept. Wouldn't it be fair until the data comes in to pass that judgment? What do you think?
Yeah, great question, thank you, Lisa. So I think it's important to remember that the city has had policies similar to this one previously, as we have this conversation around, you know, the way that you asked, wouldn't it be fair to wait for the data to come in? And that the city moved away from those policies for a number of reasons. I think in part due to effectiveness and in part due to concerns about racial equity or inequity in application and whether or not the policies were sort of applied fairly, no matter who was sort of, who was captured under the soap and soda zone. So I do think it's important to say, we do actually have examples from the past going into it. And, and when you, when the city council was considering this, these returns to policies of the past, there were a number of people who came and who testified, talking about, talking about these policies and talking about how they were previously ineffective. So I will say for me, that was in part what sort of informed my belief and my position around soap and soda. And, you know, in addition to that, my belief is that, you know, saying that somebody is not allowed or is not permitted in one part of the city is not the same as saying we are, you know, putting that person on the guaranteed path to treatment or a guaranteed path to housing or, you know, just having a place to go. And so those are the ways that I looked at that when the council was considering soap and soda. And, you know, and I will say that there is, I believe, there was a requirement, I think that's what you're referencing, in those policies that they are reviewed, I believe it's after two years that they're on the books. And certainly we'll look at the data from that. But I, what I want to say most clearly is, you know, if we're thinking about people who are, who are struggling with drug addiction or people who are in, you know, who are either doing sex work or who are being trafficked, I think it's important that the focus is on providing a safe place for people to go, making sure that they have access to services. And there were other concerns, there were concerns about whether people would simply just be caught up trying to sort of travel through those areas that came up during the passage. And so those are the things that informed my, my position on saying we should not return to these failed policies of the past.
Great, thank you. Sarah, what are you hearing from the city attorney and the SPD on the impact of soda and soap zones? And where would you stand on soda-sope zones that they came up for review today?
I would still be in support of these, of this legislation. Let me, let me tell you something. The soda and soap zones are designed to disrupt a market that is supporting illegal and dangerous activity. And it is those, the, the, the requirement that the judge can provide that says stay out of this area, that is also an alternative to jail. So we say we don't like sending people to jail, this is an alternative. You're caught in this place, then you are, then you can go before a judge and then they, they say, all right, no longer can you participate in drug activity or prostitution and, and then we'll go from there. So it is an alternative for people that want to cut down on, on that option of simply sending people to jail. But here's the thing, we have to do something more. What we were doing up to that point was not enough. And so we are trying to make it inconvenient for people to engage in, in, in the, in a, an actual marketplace. And I will say, my opponent says they weren't effective. I spoke with someone on the police force, I forget his name, that said they were extremely effective. And so I guess it depends on who you're talking to. But I will recall the meeting when we were first discussing this. And it was packed, the chambers was packed with people that were absolutely in support of this. Councilmember Moore showed a video of what is actually going on, on Aurora and, and the exploitation that primarily those women are put through. And it was, it was shocking and frightening. And so we have got to try other methods to disrupt the, the, the environment, the economies that is, that is supporting that kind of behavior. So, you know, all So, you know, all tools in the toolbox. And one last thing, but we are not the boss of the police. So what it all depends on is the police actually stopping people and making arrests so that those names can get on a list and so the whole system can work. And council has no power over that.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, let's move on to homelessness. We'd like to talk about shelter space utilization of services. So expanding permanent supportive housing and affordable housing is a shared goal. But we do need more, but do we need more immediately available options such as tiny homes, FEMA tents, conventional shelters, even managed tent cities? Sarah, what are your thoughts on this?
Yes, we need immediate, we need more shelter of any sort, tiny homes and, you know, other more basic shelter. There was an article in the Seattle Times that looked at the cities that were making greater progress on unhoused, well, on homelessness, basically encampments in cities. And those cities had reopened, this is going to be controversial what I'm going to say, congregate shelters that they had closed during the pandemic. And I'm not saying that we have to open just all congregate shelters, but it was the immediate place to get people inside that made the difference. We are spending a lot of money on permanent supportive housing that are very expensive and time consuming to build. And so I think that perhaps it's time to relook at how we are allocating resources to respond to the homelessness, to our homelessness challenges, let's say. I will also note that preventing homelessness is the greatest priority. Helping people stay in their apartments is a priority. Paying people's rent, I think direct rental assistance is also very important. But most of all, is expanded access to on-demand treatment. That's what I've been leaning on, you've heard me talk about it many times. And so any kind of solution that just puts people in housing without the wraparound services and without strong encouragement to get people who are suffering from a substance use disorder into treatment, we're just going to see the cycle of homelessness and potentially, well, self-harm and overdose perpetuated.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Dion, do you want me to repeat that question or do you kind of have it?
It'd be great if you don't mind.
Oh, sure, no problem. So expanding permanent supportive and affordable housing is a shared goal. But we do need, but do we need more immediately available options such as tiny homes, FEMA tents, conventional shelters, even managed tent cities?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, we do. So, you know, there's a couple of things that are here that I think are important when we're thinking about homelessness. And one is to make very clear that we have people in our community who are suffering homelessness from a number of different drivers. And so certainly, yes, addiction and treatment is one of those drivers. But also certainly, yes, is just being low income and living in poverty. We still have families who are sleeping in their cars around the city. And we have to be really clear about kind of the diversity of experiences that are happening for folks who are living unhoused and make sure that we actually have the capacity in our system for those different kinds of homelessness that people are experiencing. And very much the way that I see this and is not about either tiny homes or permanent supportive housing, but is that sometimes you just need the access to that first immediate thing to get you off the street, to give you a safe place to sleep at night. And in particular, what you see in the reporting around homelessness and folks who are seeking to access shelter is that there is more of a, or sometimes when you look at the numbers for when people are declining shelter, there's a clear through line because people are trying to access something that is non-congregate, a place where they can lock the door and where they can leave their stuff. And so I think it's really important that we are fighting for expansions in our shelter system that do mirror that kind of availability and access. So particularly tiny homes, you know, I've had tiny home villages that are within, you know, 15-minute walk of my house over the years. And we've brought things to neighbors. And when I've talked to some of the folks who are managing those systems, what they really talk about is a need to make sure that there is someone on council tracking and championing, onboarding, or excuse me, tracking and championing sightings so that we can actually get more of those spaces. So we do not have enough shelter capacity. I know that folks here are aware of that. And in particular, the thing that I'll highlight that, you know, has been on my mind recently and something that I want to work on on council is when we're thinking about families that are experiencing homelessness. I spoke to a provider recently who told me, you know, they get 50 to 80 calls a day from families who are trying to access shelter and that they are able to provide shelter to one or two of those families per week. And so it's really clear to me that there are not enough spaces for people to go and that they need those non-congregate options, particularly families, so that they can have the safety and the stability to, you know, to move on with their lives.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I'd like to move on to harm reduction guiding principles. Seattle City funded outreach services are largely grounded in harm reduction, meeting people where they're at. And are you open to broadening the conversation, maybe pivoting, elevating alternate voices, exploring different approaches and expanding the service provider universe? Uh, Sarah, sorry. We'll start with you.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Very much so. In fact, I, when, so let me say right now that I appreciate the spirit of harm reduction. My understanding is that it became more widely understood when needles were dispersed to interrupt the spread of AIDS and other diseases. So that is reducing that harm. I do not see the harm that is being reduced by the distribution of speed pipes and foil and how we would measure the performance of that investment. And so I do believe that we need to take a look at that because we need, because fentanyl has changed everything. It's ubiquitous, deadly and cheap. And so we need to think about making sure that the way that we deal with this fentanyl epidemic is up to date and we need more tools. And when I put together, I was working with the PVA, Purpose Dignity Action, Evergreen Treatment Services and DESC to form the basis of a coalition that I then broadened to drop a list of treatment and housing services that should be paid for with a public safety sales tax. Mind you, I was drawing a line in the sand and saying, if the mayor does this, I want 25% of the money for this. I had a press conference with, that included the people that are adherents of harm reduction as we know it and also Hope and Chance, the director of Hope and Chance, the director of We Heart Seattle. There was the Salvation Army there. Everybody's road to recovery is different and we cannot be judgmental. We have to allow for the fact that it takes all different kinds of approaches to really help people who, you know, who have very different needs when they're suffering from addiction.
Great, thank you. Dion, do you want me to repeat it or do you have it?
I'm sorry, can you repeat it?
Of course. Sarah, I'm down the full question. We're talking about harm reduction. So Seattle City's funded outreach services are largely grounded in harm reduction. Meet people where they're at principles. What is your stance on harm reduction, meeting people where they're at? And are you open to broadening the conversation and pivoting, elevating alternative voices, maybe that aren't currently, have the ear of the city council, exploring different approaches and expanding the service provider universe?
Okay, got it, thank you for that. You know, so yes, one of the things that I think, I think we agree on is that there should be space in our system and investments for people who are looking for access to, whether it's sober housing or other kinds of programs. I don't believe that there's a one size fits all approach when it comes to, you know, supporting people who are struggling with substance abuse addiction and across the spectrum. And so I think it is really important that we have access to things that, to a variety of different treatment options that are going to work for people. My belief when it comes to harm reduction is that the goal of harm reduction is to meet people where they are but not leave them there. There's a local provider who says that a lot of the time, right? And that the idea is to work on strategies that are going to help build a relationship between providers or outreach workers and people who are experiencing opioid addiction or other kinds of substance use addiction and then move them along a continuum of care and services. So we are seeing now, I think, some of those changes in our system with previous investments actually from previous councils as well. We have permanent supportive housing that actually has treatment on site with a partnership with Harborview. And we are seeing folks who have mobile treatments that are coming around to their facilities. And I think it's really important that we continue those investments because the idea of harm reduction is to try to get people moving along. That's the way that I see it and I'm supportive of ensuring that we do that. And in part, I want to say that because I also believe that, you know, when we, you know, what I don't believe is that a requirement for sobriety is going to work for most people. So I think that when we see that with some of the evidence of programs, particularly people who have some of the most severe cases of co-occurring mental health challenges and substance abuse challenges, you know, those are going to be folks who need sort of very specifically designed programs. And you can hear, you'll hear providers talk about that as well. They'll sort of say, oh, you know, this facility, this facility isn't equipped to treat our clients. And so I think it's really important when we're thinking about those investments that we're looking at it very clear-eyed about what any particular treatment facility is equipped to support a client who has those needs and that we are not over-investing in facilities that are not actually going to work for people who have the most severe cases.
Good, okay, thank you very much. So now I'd like to move on to policing and public safety. So one of the biggest challenges we have here in Uptown is open air drug use and open air drug dealing and continued degradation of our parks and our green belts. My city, Uptown, we do cleanups around the area and we're always finding drug paraphernalia and whatnot. The parks are, you know, still inhabited with encampments. There's lots of garbage, there's, you know, there's gas tanks, like there's just amazing amounts of garbage that gets pulled out of there by volunteer organizations, not the city. So Kinnear Park is a problem, Cary Park has a problem. Bike Cracky Parts lately has been having late night drug traffic and cars driving through all night and gunshots. And this is a, you know, this is a legit residential neighborhood and then that park actually has a playground in it. So super inappropriate and so far, nothing's really been done. So what would you do to put a stop to drug use and provide policing outside the identified hotspots such as downtown, Little Saigon, International Districts? We are a hotspot and we're super tired of witnessing the open air drug, you know, the refuse that's left behind for us to pick up and just the bad safety image that it portrays, just having this all over our streets. We have 10 million people plus, I think it's actually 12 million now, are coming to Seattle Center annually and they walk through our neighborhood and it's, you know, it's not always safe. And, you know, we can't have this, so what are you going to do? So I'm going to start with Dion, what do you think?
Yeah, thank you for this. I mean, I think it's, I have so many different thoughts when I put them together. Okay, so I first want to just empathize and say, you know, we had maybe two blocks down from me open air drug use that was happening just on a street for a while and my neighbors and I really struggled with it and struggled with trying to get a resolution that was going to be permanent and was going to work. So I first just want to kind of relate to you in that way and say, I hear you. And when it comes to, you know, your question, which is about how do we ensure that neighborhoods all around the city are getting interventions? I think it's really important that we, I think that's a key part of how we address it is having a place-based coordination. So I was just meeting with somebody who's been doing this sort of neighborhood-based work around the city in different areas, whether that was in, I think they worked in Del Ridge, they did Rainier Beach, now they're working in the CID. We were talking about what are the models that work and that last for the long term, not for the short term. And I think the key components that I have and that I want to bring us together on council and to do when we're talking about these neighborhood-based issues is actually making sure that you have a coordinated effort between multiple agencies of the city, but also community-based organizations. And that might be like yours, Lisa, or other folks who are, who really have a deep understanding of what's going on. And oftentimes, those are the folks who know that's the car that the drug dealers operate out of. Or this, you know, it's usually this day of the week at this time. So that there is that clear information sharing. And that was something that's been supported by city auditor reports in the past that talk about the need to have those kinds of place-based interventions. So for me, it's looking at investments and those kinds of strategies where we have recurring issues, or I don't want to say recurring issues, but where we have, you know, those kind of chronic challenges that you're talking about, Lisa. So that's one way. You know, I've been clear throughout this campaign that, oh, I see Beth. Okay, I said I've been clear throughout this campaign that I also believe we need to continue to make progress on hiring SPD and hiring more officers so that you can have a response. I myself have called for things that, you know, when there's been abandoned cars or people who are stealing cars, leaving them on our street and waited for an incredibly long time on the non-emergency hotline and then reporting it through the app and doing all those things. So, you know, I've had those experiences and I think it's important that we have the staffing so that we can have that responsiveness. But I believe it's going to be that kind of level of coordination that gives us the long-term solutions.
Perfect, thank you. Sarah, do you want me to repeat or do you have it?
I got the spirit of what you're saying. And I have to say that, you know, what's really important is that people realize that what is needed in these kinds of forums are real definite answers and not repetition of the question asked. I am really, I am extremely concerned about, what we're talking about is an enforcement issue. What I said before about council passing the laws and the executive implements, this is a source of frustration for me and probably a lot of people on this call. Because like I said before, I cannot make the police do something. I ordered that, the audit that was just referred to and presented it in my committee. That's when, that's when the term place-based policing was popularized. Other, we had to do all the recommendations in that audit, including mapping on, the audit was about concentrations of both crime and overdose. And so we had to start mapping on the co-occurrence of both so we have a better sense of what the problem is. But you already know what the problem is. The problem is that the people that are selling and using drugs are not, they're not facing consequences right now. The, when the state finally made public use and possession a gross misdemeanor, then municipalities followed suit. And I believe we should have just straight up conformed with state law, making public use and possession a gross misdemeanor. That failed 5/4. The mayor came in with a different version of a law that requires officers to perceive, can only make an arrest if they perceive a threat of harm to others. That serves to inhibit officers from perhaps making an arrest because how are you going to then explain the validity of your perception of harm of others? But the point is, this is something that the executive must address because it's not just a question of the damage to our parks and green spaces, but people are dying. People are dying in these parks and in these encampments, out of the way places, and we cannot accept that. And so again, what council can do about that is we can proviso funding in, you know, in different departments. We can send stern emails, forward your stern emails to the executive, but it is, it is a source of frustration for me.
Thank you for that clarity. Beth, I'm going to have you come back off. So we're at time, but we started a little late. Should we go for one more question and then, and then close or just go to close?
If these guys have time, I mean, why don't you, you can circle back to see one that we missed, otherwise I think.
I would talk about number 11.
Yeah, 11 would be a great.
Okay, Sarah and Dion.
No, not 11, just kidding.
No, not 11, not that one. Are you guys okay on time for a few more?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. So let's talk about number 11, no kidding, about leadership. You guys could talk about that. So Sarah, this is a very tight race. After a fairly decisive win four years ago, what do you think voters are, why do you think the voters are kind of bucking the status quo? What have you learned in your four years on the job that will encourage voters to stay with you, stay the course with you?
Well, the political pundits, the people that analyze the primary results have two explanations for it. Number one is that a lot of people didn't vote in the primary, that more and more it is the, not the activists, but the more, it's the more defined right and defined left that tend to vote in primaries more in whatever city you're in while other people go away or whatever. I don't know if that's true, the turnout of the primary. I do know that it was fairly average when it comes to primaries in odd years. But really what is going on is that Trump has totally changed the political dynamic of. But really what is going on is that Trump has totally changed the political dynamic of Seattle. And people are very afraid of um, of uh, the shenanigans coming out, out of DC and they, they went with the candidate that they thought might be furthest from Trump, so uh, furthest left in my race perhaps. I will say that what is most important in a candidate is a, is experience and a proven track record of taking on tough fights and winning them. And so that is um, that is what I believe uh, we, I need to communicate, but also just getting out the vote and making sure that everyone is aware that there is an election this year. It was very draining last year with uh, Trump and the, and you know, the uh, uh, the Democratic change of candidate the last time. And so what really matters is that we encourage people to register and vote. That's simply what it is and, and get our word out. It's, it's always the same issue every single year and so, and this year is no different on that front.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Um, Dion, what experience and leadership do you bring to the job that will bring folks together rather than further dividing us? What do you think has resonated with voters and how will you parlay that momentum as a citywide um, council member?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, first I'll say, you know, if we are thinking about the election results this year, I think they're actually fairly close to the election results last year prior to Trump's election. So, you know, when we looked at actually the election of Councilmember Alexis Mercedes-Rink, who I'm very proud to be endorsed by in this race, actually those movements were not too different. So um, I just think that's important information to put out there and, you know, and I'm really proud that I came out of the primary twenty-three points ahead of my opponent. And I think that the reason for that is, you know, I'm, I'm not a divisive person. You know, for me, like folks that have worked with me and spent time with me in my career and know that my goal is to be really clear, to be an effective communicator, to talk about points of disagreement and to address them and then to figure out how we can work towards shared solutions. And that's for me what this campaign has been about. You know, I get asked that question sometimes of, well, how are you going to work with other people in the council that you disagree with? And, and the answer is simple. I'm going to work with them, right? And I think that you don't run for office and you don't decide to get into public service unless you're really committed to trying to make your community, your city, your neighborhood, a better place. Um, and that's the energy that I want to bring to city council because we are facing some incredibly difficult challenges. And I think what people see in me and what I, what I represent and what I will bring to this position is a combination of, yes, absolutely progressive values and leadership, um, but really a commitment to making sure that we are investing in solutions that are going to work, in solutions that are going to be effective. You know, that's why I bring up my experience as, you know, somebody who's got a master's in social work. We are focused on like, what are going to be the things that actually solve our most pressing problems? And that's what I'm going to bring to this role. You know, whether that comes from my lived experience that I talked about at the beginning, or that comes from leading a multimillion-dollar nonprofit organization um, or advising the CEO of the public utility, which is one of the largest parts of the city's budget. I'm, I'm really ready to do this. And I think um, that resonates with people when I'm out talking to folks, as is the support that my campaign has garnered with endorsements from a diverse group of organizations, legislative districts. Um, and I, I see Beth, so I'll wrap up there. But uh, thank you for that question and, and thank you for having us.
Oh, thank you. Um, so I think we'll move into closing comments. Uh, I appreciate you being willing to stay on a little bit longer. Um, Dion, I think we'll start with you and why don't you just share with us? I mean, you just did a pretty good job of wrapping it up, but tell us maybe a little bit more why we should vote for you.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think I thought I was doing. So let me, I'll, I'll get something new for you. Yeah. Again, thank you for having, uh, thank you for having both of us and thank you for facilitating a, a really genuine discussion. I really appreciate the, the, the way that you all set this up this evening to have a discussion. Um, and you know, I, I guess I'll close with saying, I think that we all share what we see as our biggest challenges in the city. We are looking at affordability challenges and too many people who are getting pushed outside of Seattle and that contributes to, you know, other things that the city has to invest in, like our transportation networks and our climate protections. We are seeing, I'm seeing firsthand, you know, our neighbors who are threatened by the Trump administration in a myriad of ways. We talked about some of them today. It's not just surveillance. It's also people who are, like I said, afraid to go to a food bank or afraid to go to a community meeting and afraid to access services. Um, we are, you know, we are looking at making sure that we can actually address what has been an ongoing challenge with our public safety and with investments in getting our neighbors inside. Um, and on council, I'm committed to being a voice for working on those things through smart public policy, through bringing a strong collaborative spirit. Um, and yes, through fighting for more progressive revenue because our budget system is broken and we are not going to be able to solve these challenges unless we actually start to change the shape of the pie that we have to work with, particularly over the next several years, um, when we may see more budget deficits coming from other investments that we have. So um, I think that uh, you know, I'm really proud of the campaign that I am running and I would love to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dion. Sarah, can we hear from you? Um, yeah, just let us know why we should vote for you.
First of all, I think I answered the wrong question, last question, because I thought that you were asking me to explain the primary results. But um, what I have demonstrated as council president uh, is bringing brand-new, never-before-even some of them been in uh, politics or public service together and uh, to, to really focus on the uh, the public's top issues. This council has, has come forward and put public safety at the center of our agenda, passing twenty-four now, maybe it's twenty-five public safety-related bills. What matters is how those uh, laws are, are enforced. But we are focused on what is most important to you. I brought the Legislative Department back four days a week because it's important that we all work together in person. And I, I believe that that's, that's a requirement for public ser- servants to be present, ready to answer your phone calls and be able to give the, the answers that we need to serve you better. So that's what I will say about how I've worked with my colleagues. Six of them have endorsed me. And so um, I have great working relationships with my colleagues. I'm also endorsed by the Seattle Times, Seattle Firefighter Building and Construction Trades Unions, the Iron Workers, Elec- Electrical Workers and the Amalgamated Transit Union because uh, the uh, the workers on transit are afraid about their personal safety. And so I have uh, strong labor support as well as the support of a lot of small businesses because I have listened and brought them to the table and tried to address their needs. The storefront repair fund, which um, which, which reimburses business owners, anybody with a brick and mortar um, for damage incurred during a break-in was one of my um, my i- initiatives. So I am a practical leader. I respond to uh, to issues with a, an eye toward listening to all perspectives and then we have to make a decision. And um, and let's not forget that being a council member also is constituent services. And so when, when you call my office, you will get an answer and you'll get a solution. I would love your support for reelection and um, open to your feedback and your ideas about how we can make Seattle better together.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Beth, do you want to close?
I think we're good. You should close it. You're the closer.
Well, thank you candidates. You guys are amazing. Thank you for spending your night with us. And it was a really good discussion. I really appreciate you both. Um, thank you to our audience that stuck with us tonight. Thank you, thank you. That was, that was a long one. Um, but you did good. You hung in there and we appreciate your support. Um, so yes, get it, get all your orbit of people, you know, ready to vote, right? Um, so on behalf of Uptown Alliance, Queen Anne Community Council and Magnolia Community Council, we'd like to say goodnight and thank you so much for being here. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Go Mariners.
Yeah, bye-bye.
What's the score?
What's the score, Beth?
La, 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 la.
La, 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 la.